I will now call to July 19th, 2010, Blue Springs City Council Meeting to order. We will stand, observe a moment of silence, and then we will ask Nick Morgan from Boy Scout Troop 813, Timothy Lutheran, to come up and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. And Nick, if you want to start making your way up now.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Not yet. I'll let you know.
Have the Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Nick. You may be seated. I want to welcome all of you in attendance, as well as those that might be watching on Cable TV 7, to tonight's council meeting. The next item is the consent agenda. Are there any items that need to be pulled? If not, I would accept a motion for approval.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Lauer?
Aye.
Councilman Levise?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Bowerman?
Aye.
Carried unanimously.
Next, we have a presentation on the water sewer rate study by Stacy Miller from Public Finance Consultants. Stacy, if you would come up, please.
Good evening, everyone.
Evening.
I'm pleased to be here tonight to present to you Public Finance Consultants 2010 Water and Sewer Rate Study. Tonight, I'm going to review our recommended rates with you for the next three years. Our forecast period goes over five years, but it's typical after three years to do an update. I will also look at the sources of any cost increases. Also, because this is the fourth rate study we've done for the city, we did an original one in 2003, and this will be our third update. I'll be able to provide a little bit of a historical perspective, and as we review the finances, I'm going to highlight some of the policy goals that your staff has been able to achieve over the past seven years. So, with the first slide, we're going to cut right to the chase and let you know that to generate sufficient operating revenues to maintain prudent levels of fiscal health, we're recommending a 3% annual increase in water rates for 2011, 12, and 13, and a 1.5 annual increase for sewer rates for 11, 12, and 13. The fund balances resulting from these increases will be about 40% of operating expenditures. These increases are going to, or take into account, all costs of doing businesses. The analysis includes a detailed look at the reimbursement to the general fund for services to provided to the water and sewer departments. Also, we take a detailed look at the sewer wholesale services provided to the city of Grain Valley, and we've checked that rate as well. What this is going to mean for your constituents will be in their combined water and sewer bills, what they get in the mail. They're going to see about a 2% increase per year. For most residential customers, this is going to be about 50 cents a month. For your constituents who are maybe single users, fixed income, retired people, they'll see maybe about 30 cents a month, so a little bit lower rate. So, I think this is pretty good budget news during a tough year. The reason that we're able to recommend these somewhat lower rates when you're facing a big sewer expansion and a bad economy is because staff's been engaged in long-range planning now for about seven years. So, all the capital expenditures, certainly not the recession wasn't on our, our planning horizon, but all the capital expenditures were. So, for the past seven years, staff's been planning for this expansion, and so we've been able to smooth out those rates, and that's why our rates are pretty nominal. So, just a little bit of a history. The rate model that we use, it's a big Excel spreadsheet, very interactive. We developed it in 2003. It looks at all expenditures associated with water and sewer activities. It forecasts those out over a five-year period. Then, it looks at the revenue necess, the revenue necessary to generate a fund balance of a prudent level, and then, based on assumptions of consumption and customers, calculates out what that rate increase needs to be. So, a couple of the policy goals that have been achieved by staff over this time period is that, I mentioned before, the inclusion of all the costs of services. There's detailed accounting of the reimbursement to the general fund for their activities, justifiable to all your auditors. There's a detailed marginal cost accounting of the services provided to Grain Valley. That's checked with every update and given to them in advance, and that more precise accounting is something that's taken place in probably about the past five years. Also, again, the fact that this model's updated every two years lets the city spread risk out. You can see capital expenditures coming. The sewer expansion has been in our update for the pa, the past two updates. So, the increases that we recommended earlier sort of incorporate the fact that that was coming on down the line, so now you're ready for that. So, this kind of smooth, slow rate adjustment every year was certainly not the case earlier. When we first did the rate study for the city, they needed, you needed significant increases in 2004 and again in 2005, about 15% each year. Because that was a big change for that one year, staff, I think, very foresightedly took that opportunity to make two other changes to the rate structure. The first thing they did was they adjusted the flat or administrative fee along with a volume fee. So, you know, you get your sewer bill, and there's a fixed fee that you pay each month along with a volume charge calculated on how much water you use. So, staff took the opportunity to adjust that fixed rate as well as the volume rate to make sure that more of the fixed costs that are incurred by water and sewer can be recovered through that fee. This results in a more stable revenue source for the city and kind of insulates the city a little bit from fluctuations due to weather. So, that administrative fee has been rising again slowly over time. Now, it's about 40%, which was the policy goal set by staff. The other policy goal they met was in 2004, you instituted a tiered residential structure for your water bills. So, customers were broken out based on their consumption, and a surcharge was assessed for higher levels of consumption, hoping that this would foster conservation. And we'll look at the consumption data a little bit later in the presentation, and you'll see that, you know, while it's not definitive, because the weather changes every year. You have your wet summers, you have your dry summers. It does look like that that has an impact on consumption, and there has been conservation because of that rate structure. The 2007 and 2000, sorry, the 2005 and 2007 updates predicted sort of maybe 5% to 6% increases. There was no increase in 2007. 2008 saw a 6% increase in both services, same with 2009 and 2010. Again, those slow increases over time, we're kind of setting the stage for the changes that are happening now. So, even though there's a weak economy, we're still able to, or the city is still able to offer its citizens just a small increase for the next three years. So, that brings us to tonight's review of the forecast. We're going to look at both revenues and expenditures. We'll look and see what's happening with water consumption, because there has been a change recently. We'll review the health of the financial fund. You'll be able to see what the fund balance is, and we'll, we'll do a, sort of a detailed analysis of what your constituents are going to see on their bills. So, we estimate that over the next five years, or the five years of the forecast period, the water and sewer funds are going to spend about $75 million. That's, there's about an even share, 30% about is for personnel and operating, about 30% is for purchased commodities, that would be purchased sewer services and purchased water, and then, there's about 28% of that is capital. On the operations side, we're assuming about a 2% increase in personnel and about a 3% increase in operating expenditures. Here is a situation where staff, particularly over the past two years, has really held the line on expenditures. Your actual expenditures were much lower than we projected in earlier water and sewer rate studies because of kind of diligence on staff holding the line on those expenditures. The next biggest category, the purchased water and purchased sewer, the increases for those purchases over the five-year period kind of ranged between 5% to 10%. Water rates from Kansas City are between 8% and 10%, from Tri-County about 5%, and from Independence between 5% and 9.5%. Purchased sewer is about 6%. Those rates either come from contracted amounts currently onboard or from estimates from the providers. Now, you can see, that's 30% of your expenditures, and you got increases, you know, between 5% and 10% a year. That's one of your bigger cost drivers. So, the fact that water and sewer rates are going up at all are mainly from your purchased commodities. The capital expenditures, we've included in our forecast all the projects currently on the CIP with some additional nutrient removal for the sewer plant expansion. The debt service includes debt payments over those five years for both the upgrades to water facilities to be able to purchase water from Tri-County, and then, the new sewer plant expansion. So, the model calculates that to cover those expenses, we need about $70 million in revenue. The rate increases that we're recommending will mean about an additional $170,000 a year in the water fund and an $80,000 increase in the sewer fund. Those revenues are going to come, of course, largely from your water and sewer charges. Connection fees and interest are much smaller now than they have been historically, and they're forecasted to remain small because in the last couple of years, consumption has really fallen. There have been less customers, and consumption's fallen quite a bit. So, in our forecast, we've really taken a pretty conservative approach in what we're assuming consumption, and of course, this is a critical assumption because, you know, less consumption, less revenue, more consumption, more revenue. So, if you look at the past couple of years, you can see particularly since 2006, water consumption has really fallen. It's about a 20% decline from 2006. There's been a decline both in commercial as well as residential. However, the decline's been much steeper in residential. That's probably impacted by three things. You have two wet, cool years, 2008 and 2009. That makes a huge difference. You also have the recession that we're in. That makes a difference particularly on the commercial side. Also, though, I think, there's a little conservation going on there. You can see in 2007, which was even a dry year, there's still a drop in consumption. I think that people are getting used to the higher rates, and they started to conserve a little bit. So, when you take all of those assumptions together with our recommended increases, the combined water and sewer funds have about 40% fund balance as a percent of expenditure. That's about, the funds are, you know, give or take a few hundred thousand, the funds are about the same. So, it's about 40% in the water fund and 40% in the sewer fund. As you can see, there's somewhat of a downward trend in our graph here. You know, we have particularly high balances here, and we're kind of, you know, spending those balances down to the 40% line. Again, that's a result of the planning that we've been doing for the past seven years. We've been seeing the high capital expenditures coming on. We've planned for those, and in the end of our planning period, we're hitting that 40% So, what this means for your constituents, we have a couple sample bills here from each of the residential tiers. We've highlighted Tier 1 because about 83% of your customers, or customers in Blue Springs, fall in Tier 1. So, that's most of your people. So, for an average use of 3,700 gallons a month, they pay now, or they'll probably pay this year, about $34. That'll go up about 52 cents. Again, the small user, as I noted earlier, your fixed income, perhaps retired person, is only going to see about a 30 cent increase in their bill. That's because we've been able to hold that fixed rate constant. So, the rate increase is going to be borne on the volume charge side and not on that fixed rate side. That gives a little break to that lower user, those fixed income people. We're able to do that now because, kind of planned in advance, we've been inching that up until it covers 40% of our fixed costs. So, now, it's, now, it's, you know, at a good level. So, now, we're able to offer a little bit of a break to those smaller users. Where that puts you in the metro area compared to other cities, you're below the eight-city Those are estimated bills, what somebody using that 3,700 average consumption level, what their bills would be in all those different cities. Story is largely the same on the commercial side. Again, we've highlighted the Tier 1 commercial user because 60, what, 5 maybe percent of your commercial accounts are small commercial accounts. So, that's what most of the businesses are going to see, and they're going to see about a 25 cent increase a month. And there, again, your commercial rates are low compared to the eight-city average. So, I think, in summary, it's hopefully pretty good news for you, small increases, not a very big impact on your constituents, and we're kind of in the good situation that we're in because of the hard work that staff has done over the past seven years.
Any questions?
Yeah, Blue Springs is very well placed.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to acknowledge that we have Beth Overstreet here with us tonight. Beth is the manager over our water and sewer bill collections, and she's very instrumental in managing approximately 20,000 customer accounts that we have, and we couldn't do the work without her and her staff and their support in helping us review and prepare this information each year, and also, the work of Christine Kates, our Finance Director, who worked with our consultants. And Stacy, good to see you tonight, and thank you for your, your work with us over the past few years. Just a quick comment for those who may not be aware. On the water side, we purchase water from three different providers, and that's the city of Kansas City, the city of Independence, and Tri-County Water Authority. And so, we have to, because we don't produce and manufacture water from the river, we are certainly contingent upon changes or increases in rate structures and pricing structures from those three providers, and all of that analysis is taken into consideration. On the sewer side, we, of course, have our sewer plant, which is Sniabar, and approximately 50% of our community's sewage flow goes to the Sniabar, and we consider that to be a regional plant because we have an intergovernmental agreement with the city of Grain Valley, who also helps us with that facility, and they are partners with us in the current expansion that we're undertaking. Should also mention that we're also partners with Grain Valley in, in purchasing water from Tri-County Water Authority. The other 50% of our community's sewage is managed and processed by Little Blue Valley Sewer District, and so, we, the mayor sits on the Board of Directors for Little Blue Valley Sewer District, and I just want to give you a heads up that within a couple of weeks, we're going to probably be receiving a presentation from Little Blue Valley Sewer District staff, because they are also going through a multimillion-dollar facility renovation and upgrade, and will be moving forward with their regional participants and customers to undertake a bond issue, I believe. Is that correct, Mayor? And so, I just wanted, for the record, to remind everyone how these, these funds and these particular enterprises operate and work. These two funds are separate from our general fund, which means that we, we manage them completely independently of our general fund, and that we are not able to use funds from the water or sewer funds to support general fund operations. And tonight, your support and consideration of these rate increases will be incorporated into my budget proposal, which will be forthcoming and coming to you here in the next couple of weeks, required to give that to you on August the 1st. Thank you, Your Honor.
Any other comments, questions? If not, Ms. Miller, thank you very much for coming and making that presentation. Again, our gratitude to staff for what they've done to make this a good report, and I think one that, that I'm pleased with, that when we can reduce the increases, it's, it's a good thing.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you very much.
Just as a point of reference, what sort of increases are you seeing in other areas? I mean, you're indicating that ours is...
Is minimal, the rate increases. What are some of the rate increases you're seeing in some of the other cities?
You know, it ranges quite a bit. It depends on when the last time they had a rate study done. Some cities wait quite a bit of time, and they have large increases. Felton, in the past couple of years, has had double-digit increases. Others have been much lower.
Okay.
But I think I still, you know, with the current rates, still puts you pretty low.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments? If not, we'll accept the introduction and reading of Bill 4123. Who would like to introduce it?
I'll introduce it, Your Honor.
Okay.
First reading of Bill Number 4123, an ordinance amending Section 705010 to set new water rates for fiscal year 2010, 2011, fiscal year 2011, 2012, and fiscal year 2012, 2013. Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Others, no?
Second reading of Bill Number 4123, an ordinance amending Section 705010 to set new water rates for fiscal year 2010, 2011, fiscal year 2011, 2012, and fiscal, fiscal year 2012, 2013.
There a motion?
Move the bill be approved on its second and final reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Levise?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Bowerman?
Aye.
Councilman Lauer?
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance Number 4303.
Okay, next introduction, reading of Bill 4124. Introduce it.
I'll introduce it.
First reading of Bill Number 4124, an ordinance amending Section 705130 to set new sewer rates for fiscal year 2010, 2011, fiscal year 2011, 2012, and fiscal year 2012, 2013, and to establish deposit requirements for sewer-only customers. Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed, proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Others, no?
Second reading of Bill Number 4124, an ordinance amending Section 705130 to set new sewer rates for fiscal year 2010, 2011, fiscal year 2011, 2012, and fiscal year 2012, 2013, and to establish deposit requirements for sewer-only customers. Move the bill be approved on its second and final reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Bowerman?
Aye.
Councilman Lauer?
Aye.
Councilman Levise?
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given an ordinance Number 4305.
Next, brings us to mayoral announcements. I have a number of them, and I might ask Mr. Hood, we did have the Code Red test. Do you know how successful we were with that, or is there any indicator?
Uh...
Yeah, you want to come up? That way, we can capture you.
Yes, Your Honor. It was, it was last, let's say it was the 8th, so it'd have been a week before last on Thursday. Test was very successful. I think we had, we had no calls at City Hall from residents calling in to inquire, you know, what this was all about. So, our planning and PR campaign leading up to that, I think, was very successful. We had one call at 911 Dispatch, which, which is really pretty good, because we had checked, and that was one of the biggest concerns with other agencies. They said when they did this all call, they got inundated either at their dispatch center or City Hall. We completed about 70% of the calls, which sounds low, but actually, in talking to Code Red, that's, that's very good. The other 30% were, were primarily ring, no answer, or busy signal. Then, they also had a few operator interrupt calls. Operator interrupt could be the resident is no longer has that phone, so it says, I'm sorry, the, the number's no longer in service, or it could be on some of the cell phones where you hear the message, "Please wait while the subscriber is located." Okay? So, that's viewed as an operator interrupt. Those people would see that, that phone number on their caller ID, they could call that number back, and then, they would hear the, the emergency message. So, overall, very successful. The calls we did get, the VIPs did a great job staffing the phone over there. Like I said, we had no calls at City Hall, one at 911 Dispatch. However, the location where the VIPs were located, the phone was pretty much ringing off the hook in a good way. Most people were calling and saying, "How can I sign up my son, daughter, husband, wife?" They were actually wanting to sign up additional phone numbers.
Would you remind everyone how you sign up?
Sure. Go to the Blue Springs website, www.bluespringsgov.com code red, or CJC's website, CJCF, let's see, CJCFPD.org code red, or by dialing 220-2633.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Ed. Next, I want to remind those of you in the audience, as well as those that might be watching, the next, well, it's going to be three nights in a row. Next, Monday night, I mean, Monday, August 2nd, which would be our typical city council meeting, there will be a concert at Whiskey Tango in Grain Valley, and this concert is being sponsored or provided by one of our councilmen, Dale Carter, and the proceeds will go toward the wall, the Vietnam Traveling Wall that's coming to Blue Springs September 30th through October 3rd. So, Councilman Carter, anything to add?
Well, I understand you're going to be cowboied up for the night.
I'm going to be cowboied up. I'm going to have boots, jeans, buckle, shirt, and cowboy hat.
I can't wait.
So, for those that are curious, come see the Suburban Cowboy at Whiskey Tango on August 2nd. What time?
The doors are going to open at 5:00, and we think the music's going to start about 6:00.
Okay. Everybody got that? Okay, the next night, which will be Tuesday, August 2nd, is National Night Out Against Crime, and last year, that was very, very successful. Chief, you have anything you'd like to add to that?
August 3rd.
Mm-hmm. Did I, I didn't say that?
The 2nd. August 3rd, that evening, the National Night Out has been one of the most successful programs in the national...
Night Out has been one of the most successful programs the police department has ever had, and it's really a community event, and we'd like everybody to come out that night.
Okay. Very well.
You might give them a location, if they haven't been there before, to be at the municipal parking lot just directly east of this location here, so...
And that, that's exactly correct. Municipal parking lot just east of here.
You just gave a location. Very good. Then, the next night, which will be Wednesday, August 4th, will be the regular council meeting here at 6:30, the multipurpose room here at City Hall, I mean, at Public Safety Building. Okay, that's it for the dates. Next, I'm very proud, and I hope most of you saw this, that Blue Springs was named one of the best places to live by Money Magazine, and number 49 out of a total of 100 cities recognized. So, that's quite another feather in our hair. It's a good place, and I think all this comes about because of the spirit of cooperation that we have in this community, when you have people and organizations working together to make this the best city in the state of Missouri to live. And that's following the other recognition we received late last year when we were named the best place in the state of Missouri to raise kids, and number 26 in the nation. So, we are a national spotlighted city now, and thanks in part to staff, school districts, CJC, everybody. So, another good thing that's happening for us in Blue Springs. Another thing that we're very excited about, and it's going to take place officially next Saturday morning, is we have been wanting to deal with recycling for a long time. We will open up the Pink Hill Park Recycling Center. The ribbon-cutting ceremony is next Saturday, July 24th, at 10:00 a.m., and that's 2715 Northwest Park Drive in Blue Springs, of course, and we invite everyone to come out for that. I think that concludes my mayoral announcements, which will bring us to thoughts to ponder. Tonight's comes from Councilman Edmondson, and it's by Dandmas, and it says, "Do not condemn the judgment of others because it differs from your own. You may both be wrong." Thank you, Councilman Edmondson. That brings us to visitors. I don't have any visitors' forms for anyone to speak to the council, but before we adjourn for the night, we're going to take a brief, five-minute recess, and then, elected officials, we will go into some training. It's called Public Officials Libility Training by our city attorney, Bob McDonald. So, we're going to take a five-minute break, then, council members... Then, council members, you should return.